Again, good evening, everyone. Those of you that showed up tonight, thank you. There's like five or six people more than we had for our tax hearing 30 minutes ago, so this is exciting. I have a couple of additions, corrections, modifications, call them what you will. 6.01, addendum to agenda item 10.03, approval of personnel items. And 6.02, addition to agenda item 10.23, approval of Branson onstage live for Southwest Middle. At this time, I have citizen statements. I believe we only have one. And Trish, I don't have your last name. Gunby.
Gunby.
Gunby. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Trish Gunby, and I'm here as the Democratic candidate for a House seat in the 99th district, which encompasses part of the Parkway South and Parkway West areas. This is a special election that will occur in 41 days on November 5th. So I'm just here to introduce myself to you, tell you a little bit about myself, why I'm running, and also just to alert folks that there have been some polling location changes. So the governor called this election back in April. Our rep resigned in February. We've been without representation for seven months and called it for November 5th. And so I'm working hard just to knock doors, introduce myself to folks. I've been in the district 25 years, am a Parkway West grad. My family, my kids went through Parkway South area schools, Carmen Trails, South Middle, South High. And I had a career in marketing before I stayed home to raise them. And during that time, I was active actually in local Parkway schools, helping out every week in the classroom, but also active in committees at the district level back in the day when we were visioning 2000 and beyond, and here we are. And also did stuff with voting rights, space and enrollment issues. I was on that committee when there was discussion about consolidation and that sort of thing. So have been very active in school issues, but also canvassing for proposition and bond issues. So that's kind of been the history that I've had in the district. I was also doing some things through my church and through Neighborhood Watch, and most recently doing some voting rights work. So when this opportunity presented itself, I decided to run. And as I mentioned, we're 41 days away. I'm a proponent of public education and am hopeful that I will win this seat in the next few days. So want to also let you know, Dr. Marty actually alerted me. I was at a meeting with him and Annie Dickerson a couple of weeks ago, and we have 10 polling locations that are going to be closed, regular polling locations that will not be open during this special election. So I just want to alert residents of that. Many of the schools that are normally open are going to be closed. They'll move to other community buildings or to churches. So I would just suggest that any resident who's in the 99th, and for those who don't know where that is, northernmost part is around Bonbon West that opened up around that area, extends through Manchester Valley Park, south of 44. It goes as far east as Wideman, as far west as Baxter, Sulfur Springs. So I'm just encouraging folks to be sure and check whatever they get from the County Board of Elections to make sure they know where their polling location is so they don't end up in the wrong spot. But I just appreciate the opportunity and invite people to check out my website, trishgunby.com, and vote on November 5th, 41 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education as scheduled for September 25th, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, October 23, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School. Now we have board liaison reports. Matt, start with you.
I'll just share one thing. Last night, I was able to attend a East-West Gateway coordinating government council sustainability lab downtown at the T-Rex facility. There is a youth climate change panel. It had students from three different high schools, one was Parkway West and two other private schools not to be named. And I'll just say that we had a moderator from Parkway West as part of the panel, and then we had students on the panel. They did a great job. Obviously, I'm biased, but it was nice to see these students taking a passion for the environment, taking steps both locally in their own personal lives and in St. Louis, but also trying to push for a much greater impact worldwide, too.
I'm here speaking as a newly minted marching band, Mom. I went this past Saturday to the Tiger Ambush Classic, which is a competition that was in Edwardsville. And I was there to watch my son perform, but I also was lucky enough to see all four Parkway High School marching bands perform. I stayed a little longer than I had planned to, just so I could see all four of them, and I was so proud of all of our students. It was a lot of fun, and all of our bands did just great. Just to give you an idea of how we did, in Class 1A, South took second place and West took third place in outstanding percussion. In Class 2A, North took fourth place, and they also took fourth place overall in 1 and 2A combined. And then in Class 3A, Central took outstanding color guard. So I was really proud of all of our students, and I thought it was so cool that all four bands were there. There were a total of 28 bands. I only stayed for about half the day because it would have been about a 10-hour day to see all of them perform, but it was great.
I'll just mention there's another meeting for the St. Louis County School District's Board Professional Learning Community, which is an effort of school boards across the county to come together to learn about topics that apply to everyone. The next meeting is November 9th, which is a Saturday. That's open to everyone, and the topic is trauma-informed schools.
I was invited to attend the McKelvey International Night at McKelvey Elementary School. I always enjoy the events at the elementary schools, and I brought my daughter, and it was a lovely event. And I really like when the school's able to celebrate and embrace the diversity of our district and have fun nights like that where students get to learn and experience other cultures. So I always appreciate being included in that. Along with Jeff, I was around for the opening ceremonies of the Parkway Central Day of Service Special Olympic Soccer Tournament last week. No one told me that I shouldn't wear a suit and tie to that, so I was a little warm, but otherwise, I had a great time. And it's a really, really great day for the Central students to give back and for everyone in the community that takes part. It's just a fun, uplifting, nice day for all involved. And while I have the floor, I also want to give a shout out to our Facilities Department. Earlier this month, I got a basketball stuck about 40 feet up at Craig Elementary School in the rafters, and the best Facilities Department in the business was able to get somebody out there with, I guess, an enormous ladder and get the basketball back for me. So I really appreciated that. So thank you.
On September 16th, the Special School District's Governing Council met. It was our first meeting with the new superintendent, Elizabeth Keenan. We have asked that she report regularly at our meetings now since she's our new superintendent. This isn't anything that was routinely on the agenda in the past, but each quarter, we will have a superintendent report. Specifically, we've asked her to keep the Board, the Governing Council apprised of the audit that will be conducted throughout all 22 partnering districts within the Special School District. I also attended, a couple of weeks ago, the Navigating Parenting Online, and would like to give a huge shout out to Jason Rookson, Erin Schulte, who conducted that. It was superb. I learned so much. It threw me into anxiety panic a few times at night, and so I started texting my daughter, "Hey." But it was wonderful, learned a lot. It was kind of a good parent support group night, too, for other parents trying to stick in ideas from individuals on how to manage this world that we're all living in right now. And then along with Jeff Todd and Matt Schindler, I attended an intruder training at South High, Parkway South High School, which was, I thought, very well executed, and I thought everybody did a great job. I was very proud of the students who behaved themselves. They took it seriously, and it seemed like everybody just knew exactly what to do and when to do it. Came away with a few ideas for opportunities to improve, but overall, I think it was very successful and happy, unfortunately, that we even have to go through that, but at least prepared and know what to do in case such time occurs. Thank you.
And I'll just echo that. I thought the drill was very well prepared for and very well executed. The thing that impressed me the most was immediately after the drill was over and the all-clear was given, students were back in class, all of the administrators and a few others, including we board members, got together and just brainstormed for 15, 20 minutes about what we observed, what we thought went right, what things that we thought might be able to be approved. And so I thought that was good, that they took it seriously enough to devote that time to talk about it while it was fresh in their minds, and I know they're going to continue honing their preparation for any future drills. This past Monday, we had our first Project Parkway Steering Committee meeting of the year, a little bit different format, which I thought went very well. Sam, who's not here tonight, was not able to be in attendance as he normally is, but I heard lots of great comments about the format, about how concise it was, and three great topics, one of which we'll hear a little bit about tonight. So that was great. And I'll echo the comments about the Central's Day of Service. They started it. They do it very well. I'm always impressed when I've been there and I've seen the kids interacting with the athletes that come from so many different schools around St. Louis. And then I was able to visit a couple of the sites that were offsite where we sent some of the sophomores that day. And to see them doing different things outside of the building for different organizations was really great.
Board members, thank you. Thanks for all that engagement and all your efforts to get involved in a variety of things. I would just add, and this is really more for the public because the board members know this, but the last meeting, the board expressed desire to support any work or initiative from the St. Louis Public School District and the St. Louis community around gun violence. And I did speak to Dr. Adams, and he was very grateful and very appreciative that some of you were in attendance, and then very appreciative of the board's desire to be of help. And to share, again, the board knows this, but they are having some additional discussion in the district as well as with officials in Jefferson City and Kansas City, which also evidently, we don't hear a lot about Kansas City, but they've had their share of gun violence. And so Calvin said, "We don't know what we're going to do yet, but when we have some strategies or some ways that you can assist from Parkway, we would welcome that." So he was very, very appreciative and thankful, and we talked a lot about the fact this is a regional problem. This isn't just the city. We have to, as many of you said last time, this is something that affects us all. I would just also say that many of us will be heading to Tantera, I won't give the new name, tomorrow for the annual school board convention. And that's a major convention, probably one of the biggest in the state, really, when you think about all the board members and superintendents, other school officials that come to that, many vendors. So it's a big, kind of a big deal, and I appreciate so many of you are able to attend. So we have full days on Friday and Saturday, and if anybody's staying over till Sunday, but there's actually even some sessions on Sunday. So we'll be well represented at the meeting. And I know a lot of you have taken a note of, there's some really good sessions, and it's always a good opportunity to learn and see what districts are doing in Missouri, big and small, big and small districts. So thank you.
Thank you. I already mentioned the Project Parkway Steering Committee. This current school year's subcommittee meetings, aside from the Project Parkway Steering Committee, will begin in October, so those dates will be published soon. 10.0, action items. We have a normal-sized laundry list of items, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the September 25th, 2019 board materials?
So moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. 11.0, action items. We have an adoption of the tax rate for 2019, 2020, for which we had a special meeting, a hearing at 6:30 earlier tonight. We had no citizen comments during that. We had a great presentation by Patty, which was always making really complicated things understandable for the rest of us, so thank you very much for that. We didn't really have any major questions then, so I assume there's no questions now. So may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education adopt the tax rates by category as presented above in the blended tax rate for the Parkway School District for 2019, 2020, in the amount up to a blended rate of $4.15.24 to be distributed with a special revenue fund rate of $2.29.44, general fund rate of $1.23.54, capital projects rate of $13.26, and debt service fund rate of 49 cents.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Nikki, please.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Patty. Next, may I please welcome Ms. Amy Joyce, Chief Human Resources Officer, to talk about our next year's academic calendar.
Yes. Good evening, President Todd, members of the Board of Education. Tonight in your board packet, you have an amended 2020, 2021 calendar for student attendance, and we will develop our employee work calendars after the board considers this for approval this evening. As you may have heard, we had a new state law that required all school districts not to start until 14 days before Labor Day, so that pushed our start date to August 24th. And because of that, we had to make some changes with our calendar. Basically, it shifted everything about a week, and we will end in June, and we will have to have our finals after winter break. We did ask for stakeholder input and opinion. We talked with our employees. We did a thought exchange and got a lot of ideas. We had about 40% of the respondents were in support of the later start date, but of course, everybody wants to end before Memorial Day, and that is just not possible at this point. All areas, school districts, had to work through this new change as well as the whole state. We do have a new requirement that we, you know, kind of massaged and changed a few things, that we're looking at the number of hours that we're actually attending versus number of days. And so how does that impact Parkway? We right now go above the state minimum number of hours. They require 10.44. We are approximately at 10.80. They no longer require the number of days, which is, it used to be 1.74, and we always hover at around 1.77, 1.78. We are just a little bit below that, but well above the number of hours. So we believe that this academic calendar that we're proposing will meet the teacher needs as far as delivering a high-quality curriculum. It also meets the needs of our staff for a few breaks here and there in the fall and then in the spring, as well as providing for professional development opportunities so our staff can continue to grow and learn. We actually had our first committee meeting for the 2122 calendar last night, so we're anxiously awaiting approval of this so we can move forward with developing our next one.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you and your staff in the Calendar Committee for jumping through a few hoops that you did once this law finally got signed, and it was obvious that it was going to go forward. I know it was a lot of juggling dates and trying to make everyone happy. I would like to say I'm especially grateful that we saw to it to make sure we had an appropriate number of breaks this fall. As we've talked about, our mental health task force has identified that having those breaks is vital to a healthy environment for our kids, so that's important. You mentioned the thought exchange in giving our community opportunities to provide feedback. Have we looked at comparing our calendar, our proposed calendar, with the proposed calendars of our surrounding districts, our neighboring districts?
Sure. So the superintendents met as a group and discussed first strategies. What are we going to do to attack this? And then we had a second meeting that included area HR representatives, because we're the department that typically guides that work. And there were different philosophies. Some felt, no, we want to get out before Memorial Day, so we're just going to, you know, squish everything as much as we can and eliminate some of our time off or make breaks shorter just so we can get out. Others had the philosophy that Parkway did, that we felt that those breaks are important for our students and for our staff, so we wanted to keep those built in. And then there was also lengthy discussion about when do we have high school finals? And, you know, the thought is just get them in before winter break. Finals are done, check it off. We felt that because we wanted those breaks, the exchange would be to push the finals a week after we got back in January, so we could have a little bit of time for review and then have students take the finals that second week. So I would, we'll be polling everybody to see where they finally ended up, but everybody is pretty much where we are with recommending, tweaking, changing. One thing I can say is, area school districts, we did finally come to some agreement that we would all have the same spring break week. So I hope you never have to ask, "When is Rockwoods?" because we will be on the same page. Yeah.
If I can be bold and say, speaking to that district to the west, they're taking their calendar tomorrow night, so I want to be careful because, you know, but it's very similar hours in terms, I mean, there's some changes, but in terms of starting and ending, in the semester exam, it matches us. At least our proposed calendar, and we'll see how their board reacts tomorrow night. Because usually, that's the question, what's Rockwood doing? And they're going to say, what's Parkway doing? So.
I would just echo the good work on it. It's not something that you wanted to go through, needing to redo the calendar with some of these parameters that are challenging to make everyone happy with, so.
I'm proud, too, from the standpoint that, at the end of the day, our responsibility, I think, while we hear all kinds of things like, we want to do this, we want, you know, be done by Memorial Day, but I think our responsibility as a school district is to do what's right for kids, students and student learning, and teachers. And so another issue is even semesters, you know, some districts, again, by some of their changes, and I don't want to criticize other districts, but, you know, it's difficult if you have semester that aren't even. So one semester I'm going to have 80 days, and the next one I'm going to have 95 or something. So that's difficult. So again, our semesters are fairly even, and I think that's the benefit of our teachers and our students. And so I think, you know, the work really should be for us to say, what's in the best interest of our students? We have longer days already. I mean, we have extra minutes. And that does, maybe you want to just mention, that does affect how we post snow days, too.
Yes. So the way that the state, they ask you, what is your planned calendar and your planned calendar hours? They don't want to know the number of days anymore. So when we enter our planned hours, we would enter the 10.80. They want you to build in 36 hours above the 10.44, so approximately six days. So in this school calendar, we're fine. We had enough built in. In the calendar that's before you, we needed to identify two more hours in the calendar to get to that number. So if for some reason we use a whole bunch of snow days, and Dr. Marty says, you know what, the roads are going to be fine in a couple hours, but we would maybe only have to make up two hours. We could opt to make up two hours, maybe on an early release day, instead of making up a whole student attendance day. So it does give districts more flexibility regarding when they would make up that time if we end up in a severe weather season.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So may I please have a motion and a second. The Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 revised academic calendar as presented in the September 25th, 2019 board meeting materials?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Nikki.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Tonight, we have no policy review. We have no official reports. However, we do have a work session. So if I could please invite Patty Bedborough, CFO, Will Rosa, Director of Transportation, Paul Tandy, Chief Communications and Emergency Management Officer, and Chelsea Watson, Deputy Superintendent, to join us down here at the podium.
They're going to do a little dance behind me?
Dance?
Right. Good evening, President Todd, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. We are here to talk about Facilities 2030. So just think, where might you be in 2030? What might you be doing in 2030? What year is this?
It's 2019.
Wow. We know a few things that we're thinking about for 2030 here in Parkway. But first and foremost, why are we here? It's all about our kiddos. It's about our Parkway mission. That is why we come to work every day, work hard every day, and it's why you all do what you do, because our Parkway mission is our purpose every single day. And we keep that in mind with all the decisions that we make and the initiatives that we move forward. So Facilities 2020, 2030, sorry. As we think about Facilities 2030, we're thinking about planning. We're thinking about our buildings. We're thinking about student needs, community needs. We're thinking about how our buildings look. We're thinking about, is the grass cut? That was just a little joke today. Lightens up a little bit. So lots of components as we think about the future in Parkway. Another list of items, brainstorming as we think about the past, reflect on what we've done well, what we need to do better, and as we think about the future, what we want to accomplish as we think of our purpose, which is our Parkway mission. So you see one item highlighted on that list, student enrollment. And so that's what we're going to focus on today. We're going to focus on student, I have no idea how that slide got in there. How'd that slide get in there?
Well, because you're going to talk about the...
Oh, yeah. I thought there was another slide before. We're going to talk about student enrollment and capacity. That is the right slide. So I want to take you back. We were talking about the future, but I want to take you back to the year 2018. And during the year 2018, in February, I had the opportunity to meet with some students. And so we've had an ongoing Project Parkway Student Advisory. And just because you did mention the Steering Committee and the change, we will meet with the students before a number of board meetings this upcoming year. So it is so important for us to continue to hear their voices. And so in 2018, we asked for some help. And I'm just going to, this is just one scenario that we gave the students in 2018, our high school students. McKelvey Elementary School has 623 kids. The fifth graders are in the fifth-grade center trailers outside. How do we serve a reasonable number of students at McKelvey and eliminate the fifth-grade center? With this scenario, we gave them Nathan Tyson's enrollment projections, broke a little of it down for them based on the school and the scenario that they had by giving them enrollment projections, also gave them the enrollment by grade level. Now, they also had all the other schools in Parkway. But this is the one scenario I'm just sharing with you here. I also shared a little bit about ISC. This is a building, and this is close by. At the time, also, I shared a little information about FER. So they understood the buildings that we learned and the buildings that we had, where we learned. So here was their recommendation with the scenarios that we gave them. As they looked at me like I didn't have a clue, they kind of thought, why did Dr. Watson engage us in this activity because it's so obvious? They said, change the boundaries. They said, it's best to do it during the elementary years. Middle school, okay. High school, good. Kids will be fine. Parents will not be fine. Kids make friends easy, easily. Kids are resilient. They said, change the boundaries. They said, it's best to do it during the elementary years. Middle school, okay. High school, good. Kids will be fine. Parents will not be fine. Kids make friends easy, easily. Kids are resilient. And I told the kids at that time that if we ever got to this point, I was going to ask them to work with us as we communicate this information. I will tell you, because they had a number of different scenarios, they shifted everything south, everything. So didn't share all the scenarios with you, but they had central folks going to Sorrento and all sorts of things. But they felt that we needed to make some shifts, so we had schools that could best serve our students as we think about the number of students in the school and the number of students in the classrooms. So just wanted to share the student perspective, because I think so often we forget that many times they have the best ideas and the best suggestions, and we need to listen to them as we think about the work that we do here in Parkway. Because ultimately, our mission's about our kids and what we do impacts them on a daily basis. So now I'm going to turn it over to Patty and Will, who are going to talk specifically about certain schools, their enrollment and their classroom capacity, and then show you some lovely maps that Will has beautifully designed.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. So as Chelsea mentioned, this is the other part of my summer vacation. Will and I spent a great deal of time together reviewing not only our enrollment projections, our building capacity as far as classroom sizes and spaces, but you'll learn how he has subdivided some areas around our boundary lines into what's called NPUs or neighborhood planning units. So we've used those smaller increments in order to plan for some potential boundary changes as well. So to begin with, when we looked at our student enrollment, we looked at our current enrollment, and then we looked at our future projections as well. And we continually look at their, look at them. But we really, when we looked at the data, we knew that it was time to then employ more than just us in the work. So early spring, we started meeting as a group of administrators as Facilities 2030 planning. And then during the summer, we broke up into a smaller group where we went to problem solve then as well. So all of the information that we present here has gone through the larger committee, and they have approved these recommendations as well, or supported them. So our four elementary schools that we believe are areas of concern are Riverbend Elementary, Craig Elementary, Shenandoah, and Henry. Will and I, like I mentioned, looked at the NPUs and looked at each school individually to see what we could obtain as a reasonable solution. I want to begin first with Riverbend Elementary. So their current enrollment is 469 students. Their projected enrollment was only 451. You'll see that their current classroom use is 23, and their actual classroom capacity is 22. That is not a mistake on the slide. We actually creatively have placed a classroom into what formerly was a closet, a data closet. So, and that's where the mosaic room is. The students do not really feel that. When you walk into that classroom, it is bright and cheery and full of fun and creativity. However, we know that that building is at its capacity. When we looked at Riverbend, we could move to the north, and that would be McKelvey. That would also switch high schools, or we move to, I guess that would be the west, that would be the south, Green Trails. Green Trails, while it's not at capacity, it doesn't have a large amount of space for an overflow. So our recommendation from the committee is to actually do an addition to Riverbend Elementary. We have reviewed this with our facility staff, so James Swingle has taken a look at this. We believe out back, if you follow those arrows, we could actually do either a four classroom, single story, or a two classroom, two-story addition, so still total four classrooms, into that rear portion. We believe approximate cost 1.2 million to 1.4 million for the addition. And you may ask, where's the source of the funding for that? When we sold our bond issue, we actually sold them at a premium. We received $4 million in premium for that, so that would be our suggested source of funding for that addition. We will be bringing a proposal to you at the October Board Meeting in order to add that project to the bond issue project list. Our next elementary that we looked at was Craig Elementary. So our current enrollment is 475. Over the next five years, that enrollment is projected to be at 520 students. Our current classroom capacity is listed at 24, and once again, that's not a mistake. We're currently using 25. We actually needed to revamp a special resource room and make that into a classroom. It's a much smaller kindergarten space, but we made that into a room for now. But as you can see, we are at capacity in that building. So we have our recommendation to make a shift both to McKelvey Elementary, a slight shift of about 12 children, and to Ross Elementary. And I'll have Will explain these neighborhood planning units to you in more detail.
I've never seen this map, Pam. We spend a lot of time on the map. I'll try and explain it. The white areas in the middle are the areas that are moving. So there's three areas in total, and the two areas in white on the southern portion there, I don't have a pointer for you.
No, I don't have a pointer.
I'll have to set this, I don't know if that pointer works. Well, in any event, the two, and they're hard to read the labels, Craig Move 1 and Craig Move 2.1. Those two areas are off the Bennington Place Drive right there, they're just south of it. So those two areas would be going to Ross, which is in the green. The green area is the Ross attendance area, the yellow is the Craig attendance area. And then the light blue up in the top portion of the screen is the McKelvey attendance area. So those two sections, areas, NPUs, are going to Ross. And really, they're reuniting, because one of them is the Pavilion Apartments that had been split. North of Bennington is Pavilion, and then on the other section, that is the Bennington Heights Apartment Complex, and north of Bennington is also Bennington Heights. So it's kind of a good thing to reunite them. It's confusing for families moving in. We get a lot of phone calls, in fact, when they do move into those areas. And then the area that's further north, that's going to McKelvey, that's part of the Glenwood Platt subdivision. And so we're just really reuniting that neighborhood. They're very close to McKelvey, they're almost in the walking, walking distance, and there's 12 students in there. So that just made sense. It's everything north of Marine, if you can see it on the map.
What's the intersection in the middle?
I'm sorry, it's...
It's 270.
Oh, the big, the big road is Page, Page 364, the double red, and then 270 is on the right side. Yeah, the map's, the map's pretty small, and it's hard to see from here, so.
Just so everybody, I mean, there's been some significant growth out of that new development at the corner of Page and 270, right? That's where the...
The big circle in the middle, it says Craig Move 5.1, the big, bigger in the center, it says Borough. There's probably 35 students in there now, 40, just within a year or two.
It's still growing.
Yeah, it's still growing.
Yeah. I think Patty maybe want to, I mean, I think people might raise eyebrows on sending kids to McKelvey, but we, this is, this is after we also make the switch with McKelvey next year.
Exactly. So after we open McKelvey Primary, it is also, as Will mentioned, the reunification of that subdivision. So at one point in time, that subdivision was actually split, where a portion of that was going to Craig and a portion to McKelvey. So it does make sense to blend those two, the two portions together for one subdivision. Yeah, I think it's 12 students now, yeah.
And how many students would be moving from Craig to Ross about?
So right now, well, we have the projection that, and Paul's going to walk through that as well, the current fourth graders, they would remain there as fifth graders, so the initial move would only be the kindergarten through fourth graders. So the numbers are reflected here, so they're for the current, of course, it does, this is Ross then, Elementary, and the impact, you would have Ross grow from the projection of 391 to 455, so about 64 students in that, in that year. And then essentially Ross grow from the 375 currently to 478, five years out. Whereas if we flip back to Craig, with the change, they would go from the 475 currently down to 436. So that, that gives them some room for the other areas as they re-green as well, too. Our next school that we dove into was Shenandoah, so Shenandoah Valley. If we look just to the south of Shenandoah, of course, we have Highcroft Ridge. Shenandoah, once again, 502 students this year. They're utilizing each and every classroom. He was worried he had one classroom that was getting very close to needing to be split again, but he was going to have to give up the teacher's lounge in order to do so. So thank goodness, enrollment growth did not go over. So he's utilizing every classroom space. He's projected to grow to 519 students over the five-year. Looks like it'd still be in that same classroom capacity. However, we know that right next to them, we have a building that has capacity, and that would be Highcroft Ridge. So moving approximately, I think it's 50 to 60 students from there, we'd have a little bit more room where we'd have two classrooms that would be spare. And then Will will walk through the map there. And then Highcroft currently is at 356 students, utilizing 18 classrooms, and then with the move, they would go up to about 482 students, so getting more on that average building size of Parkway, and then utilizing 23 classrooms in total. So Will, do you want to explain our little NPUs here?
So on this map, the, you see Highway 64, 40 in the top red, and then right below that is Chesterfield Parkway. And then Highcroft Drive, is it touching the green on the very bottom there? That's Highcroft. And Clarkson to the west, or on the left on the map. And so the areas that are moving is, it says Shen 3-1 and Shen 2-1. So 3-1 is a neighborhood, there's several neighborhoods there, Baxter Oaks, Old Baxter, Central Oaks, Oak Post Lane. And then the other neighborhood is Estates of Baxter Lane is back there, and then the Brandywine Condominiums is also in that area. I think there's about 16 students in there now. And then the next section over, NPU Shen 2-1, which is less than one mile from Highcroft. It's by point, most of those units in there are 6.75 miles to Highcroft. Shettler Village Apartment Complex, and there's approximately 47 students in there, this year, anyway. So those, those two areas in white would be moving. I don't know if you can see the dot, is Highcroft, the circle there on the map.
Yeah, so with this one in particular, most of the people that live right in that area actually have to pass by Highcroft in order to get to Shenandoah. So it makes sense that it would be included into the Highcroft attendance area. So once again, the shift, what that means to Highcroft's enrollment over time. So certainly they have the capacity to handle that. Our next school that we will discuss is Henry Elementary. While Henry this year is not at capacity, we moved a few program classes from Henry beginning of this year to Claymont Elementary to free up space for two classrooms. So they actually have one spare classroom this year. Our recommendation is to move about 30 students gradually from Henry Elementary to Mason Ridge Elementary. So, and with that, their proposed change, and we'll discuss that a little bit later, is one, one-year delay from the other two suggested timelines. With this, do you want to describe this map?
So this one is, the two areas in white are the move areas, and the one to the north is Henry Move 2-1. 141 is the red line right in the middle. And so the area to the north, just is between, it's just north of Clayton. The post office is in there, Lampen.
Spectrum, spectrum.
Spectrum, yeah, Spectrum Cable, and the post office is right there, so it's just north of that. And there's two, there's two neighborhoods in there. One of them is Willow Bend Luxury Apartments, it's just one street. And then the next one over, there's the Manners of Town and Country Regency Manor, and then the Manners of Town and Country Bristol Manor. And I think there's approximately 18 students in there, and that, and there's about six or seven streets in there, in that neighborhood. And the, and the light blue is Mason, that's the Mason attendance area, just to give you an idea. It's touching Mason on the north and to the right. And then the south area, the other white box is the Manor Way, and that's right off of 141. Manor Way is north of Dutch Mill, if you know where that is. And that's Polo Downs, Devonworth Manor. There's three or four streets in there, Manners of Town and, Town and Country, Bristol Manor. So there's just three or four neighborhoods in there. It's a pretty small area. And that touches Mason also, they're close to it.
And then the impact on Mason Ridge. The current projections were for Mason Ridge to decrease in size, so their current enrollment is 460 students. The five-year projection was for them to decrease down to 419 students. With this slight move, in the five-year projection, this moves them to 453 students, and then utilizing their 24 classrooms.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we would propose in terms of the implementation of this. And as we learned in the last boundary adjustment, which was in 2011, we did do some what people call grandfathering, allowing certain people to stay to try to minimize the impact on families, which is one of our board guidelines. And so we're going to recommend doing that again. First, I'm going to talk about Craig and Shenandoah. We are recommending that these changes take place in Craig and Shenandoah for next fall, so the fall of 2020. And what we're recommending is if you are a current fourth grader this year, that you could stay at that same school to finish out your elementary school, so you don't have to go to a different school for just one year. So you'd grandfather in. And if you had any other younger siblings currently attending the same school, that they could also grandfather in for one more year. And both of those would be with transportation provided. What we're recommending is then after that, from two years on, any other sibling that's still there, if they want to stay, they would have to apply for a special assignment and only be granted if space was available. And if space is available, they could stay, but transportation would not be provided after that, after that first year. The other grades, so K through 3, currently K through 3, they, if they want to remain, again, they could apply for a special assignment, but the same thing holds. They could only stay if there were space available, and they would have to provide And we're recommending that if they, if you are, you don't currently attend the school, let's say maybe you're, you know, three or four years old, that we not consider special assignments. We think they should go ahead and go to their, the new school. Voluntary transfer students obviously are not really impacted by this because they don't reside there, but we just wanted to make it a point to say, we are going to make sure, we try to do whatever we can to keep families together as some of these shifts are, are taking place. We also believe that the recommendation would be when a new family moves into that area, so they don't currently live there, but let's say they move in this year, that, again, they don't have an option to special assignment, they would go to the new school. And obviously, transportation would be provided. Okay, moving to Henry. Henry's numbers are not quite so, as you may have seen, they're a little more gradual in terms of where they are. You know, we, not so long ago, added on to Henry, added classrooms to Henry. And so what we're recommending is that this not take place until the 21, 22 school year. And the reason we're going ahead and bringing this to you now is one of the things we heard from the Project Parkway Steering Committee a while back was, if you know you're going to do it, try to give families as much advance notice as possible. Go ahead and get it out there. And so what we would recommend is that we make the transition for Henry, similar to Craig and Shenandoah, but it's just one more year out. So it would not take place until the fall of 21. So if you are a fourth grader in the 2021 school year, you could stay for your fifth grade year in 21, 22, transportation provided. Same would be if you had another... Same would be if you had another siblings already enrolled, they could stay for one more year as well. Transportation provided. So really, what you're talking about for Henry is students who would be in grades K through 3, or K2, I guess it's K2. Currently, K2, as this year, right now, K2. Because the third graders would be grandfathered in as eventually fifth graders, if that makes sense. So really, it's just K1 and 2 currently who would be affected by the change. And obviously, just like the other, they could apply for special assignment if space is available, but we would not provide transportation. And there's a point and note there at the bottom. Right now, Henry's not accepting any special assignments, so. And this is a fairly small number of students. How many was it for Henry we're looking at currently?
33 in total.
33 in total. But some of those are probably in the third, fourth, and fifth grade, so you're looking at maybe half of that-ish. So it's a fairly small number, but it's important to point out, we say special assignments can be made, but right now, we're not granting any due to their numbers. Again, with the Henry and Mason situation, if a family wants to go ahead and switch now, which some might, just say, I want to go ahead and do it, I don't want to wait. What we're recommending is that they would do a special assignment request, and as long as Mason has the space available, then they could do that. And if they do that, we're recommending that we do provide transportation for those. And again, assuming you approve it, once you approve the changes, any new students in the impacted areas, again, like the others, that we would recommend they don't have the option to special assign if they're moving into the area brand-new, haven't already attended Henry, that they would go to Mason Ridge. And obviously, transportation provided. You do have board guidelines in JC dot BP and JCG, and I just thought I'd briefly kind of let you see those. It's hard to accomplish all of our board guidelines because sometimes they conflict with one another, but I do believe that the work has tried to fulfill these guidelines and follow the guidelines. So we've tried to keep schools, neighborhood schools, keep them close. In fact, if you look at several of the changes, particularly at the Highcroft, those kids are actually much closer to Highcroft than they are to Shenandoah. To favor presently enrolled students, our recommendation is that, you know, you have some grandfathering for existing students and new students coming in would not. We're trying to avoid moving kids for one year only. That's why we're doing the grandfathering, or recommending the grandfathering. Safety, I mean, honestly, if you look at some of those boundaries, for example, the 141 with Henry to Mason, that neighborhood planning unit on the east side of 141, it's all Mason, there are their neighbors over there, and then there's that major 141. It's a safer alternative to keep them going east as opposed to crossing over 141. And there's other in that, recommendations that kind of fall along that line. Try to equalize the number of students. I mean, obviously, that's the biggest thing we're trying to do, is try to keep them relatively equal, and to try to keep students in one subdivision together. And in fact, as Will pointed out, in the apartment complexes, for example, at McKelvey, the apartment complexes are split between Bennington, and essentially, what we're doing is putting the apartment complexes back together, and they all go to Ross. Right now, half go to Ross and half go to Craig. And that other subdivision just north of, is it Marine, what's the Marine? It's actually a McKelvey subdivision, and it's split in half right now. So that would rejoin that subdivision to go to McKelvey, and it's only 12 students or so, but. You know, we still have at Highcroft and Mason, we still have a split whereby some of the students go to Central and some go to West. We're not addressing that in this recommendation, and it's important to note, some people have asked, none of those feeder patterns would change for any of these impacted families. They still, if they're currently, you know, assigned to go to north, they're still going to go north and central and west. And to allow as many students as possible to remain in the schools they're now attending. These are, you know, fairly, I don't know if the word is surgical, it's fairly small. We're trying to keep the numbers to what we feel like we need to do, but not go too much because we know it is disruptive to families, and we're trying to make a reasonable approach. And what we also have to remind people is it's difficult for Dr. Tyson to project very far out. You know, like the last time, we feel good, we're probably, you know, four or five years out, we feel good about this, but we can't guarantee that five years or six years or whatever down the road. I mean, our last boundaries was 2011, so when now we're 2019, we made it eight years. We just have to remind folks that this is a continue, ongoing process of evaluation as the enrollments fluctuate over time. I can remember when I first got here, in fact, Craig Elementary was really small, and there was discussions about it. And now it's bursting at the seams. In Riverbend, there was discussions about, gosh, it's 240 kids, you know, is that a viable school? And now it's bursting. So these things evolve over time, and we just have to remind parents of that. We're lucky, really, in Parkway, we're fairly stable. There are other school districts that have to go through this a lot, and so, you know, we're fairly fortunate in that regard. Am I doing this one? So this is kind of the timeline of where we've been in terms of getting feedback and discussion. We did talk with the principals, we actually have talked with them a couple of times. And then we did meet with the Project Parkway Steering Committee just this week, and then obviously here with you all. And then we've identified October, the 22nd, is we're going to have a meeting that night to invite all those families who might be affected by this to come in. And we're also inviting any families who are in pre-K, so who are in early childhood type programs that live in those areas to make sure they are aware and they can come and provide feedback and ask questions. So we'll do that on October 22nd. I don't know that we've identified a location yet. Oh, Central High School, so it'll be at Central High that evening. And then we will reconvene the Facilities 2030 Committee sometime there in late October, early November, to then kind of go back and review everything that we've heard. And that's the opportunity at that time, if we feel like we need to make any tweaks to bring back to you or not, we will have a final review by the Superintendent's Action Team. And then our plan is to come back to you at your November board meeting to seek a decision. And the reason we need that is obviously, we need to start communicating with families and begin to consider staffing implications for, starting in January. Subject to your questions, that concludes our presentation.
I have a question, which might be suited best for Will. You mentioned, well, in light of the bus driver shortages we've had in the past few years, talking about different schools having extra transportation provided for that one year grandfathering, how does that impact our personnel or the cost?
Come to the mic.
The numbers here, because it's not a large number of students that were moving, so if we're going, if we're adding two or three kids to a route, we're okay. We're not actually adding a bus in that scenario. So actually, it's not. If we'd have gone to pick up, you know, 30 or 40 kids, we'd have some challenges. But even the grandfathering, and some of those neighborhoods, they're pretty small. So we're...
They're spread out.
They're spread out, and we think we can add the few number of kids that we'd grandfather in for that year, so.
And we grandfathered back in 2012.
Yeah, we did that for four years for North High. And the same thing, because we were able to cut through Old Farm, and it worked out pretty good, so.
Is the McKelvey Primary, obviously, we put a lot of resources into opening that facility, but is that the long-term solution to have the primary split from that school? And do we look at doing that with other schools, or is this just a unique situation?
Well, we're kind of blessed to have, you know, ISC sitting there, so.
It was a former, it was a former school.
Former school, Robin, Robin Hill. Is it, is, we're, no, you saw that term up there, sustainable? We're not, we're planning to continue to McKelvey campuses.
Right, okay.
And we're fortunate.
Indefinitely.
And next school year, it will be kindergarten.
Right, right.
And then the following school year, we'll have kindergarten and first grade, so kids don't have to make two transitions, kindergarten to McKelvey, McKelvey Primary and back.
What I like about having that, essentially, fifth elementary school now again in that north area, it gives us much more flexibility down the road. For example, if McKelvey's numbers start to reduce, you could then take McKelvey back to just one building, but if the neighboring schools are really big, you could move, shift them around, or perhaps open up a fifth elementary in the whole north area. It just gives you a lot more flexibility now that you've got, again, a school right there in the middle of the north area.
So along those lines, have we looked at the new boundaries and how it shakes out, as well as the impacted, the families impacted by the change using an equity lens, just to make sure we're not unintentionally creating either segregated schools or, you know, the only families impacted by these changes are lower-income families, or that? I don't know how to eloquently put it.
You are, that's a good question, and I think one of the, and I, saying this makes it sound like there's some assumptions being made, but we're always sensitive to the kind of residential homes. And we went through this back in 2011, 12, you know, we don't want to just redistrict apartments.
Right.
And so I think, you know, it's been a good balance here, wouldn't you agree? And we're not talking about a large number of students, you know, probably the biggest is the Craig to Ross.
Right.
And both schools' demographics are pretty similar.
And it would be, it would just be hard if, or not great if all the families coming to that information, either lower-income families in the district or...
Well, you know, our north attendance area is our most diverse attendance area as it is already. So we're talking about students from Craig, again, so many cultures at Craig already, Ross looks similar. So when you think about students from Craig to Ross compared to students from Shenandoah to Green, or to Highcroft, just based on where folks live and residential, you know, you might see some different cultures being represented based on school in that meeting.
Yeah.
And if I could, if I could piggyback on what Christie said, ahead of our October 22nd meeting, knowing that some of those families don't speak English, are we going to make an extra effort to reach them and make sure that they...
Great point. We'll look at those families, because it's a fairly, you're looking at approximately 180 students in total with this whole thing. And so we can look at those and prepare for that meeting. That's a great point.
And our principals will get the list of the families that we are inviting via letter. So we will invite families via letter who are in those areas, and communicate District Y for anyone else who wants to come, but that personal invitation. And again, early childhood, Elena has already, is getting ready to pull, we did that for McKelvey already, but getting ready to pull any family that is enrolled in any of our early childhood programs that are in that area, so we can invite them as well.
And as we did last time, we'll have the, all the principals involved, so the sending schools, if you will, and then the schools who would be receiving students, because of what we saw last time is, as much as anything, they wanted to talk to those principals of the receiving schools to find out more information about that school. So it's an opportunity for that principal to explain, you know, their culture and their community.
In addition, the principals who are going to receive new students will, just like we did last time, have specific events that they will invite those families to, come see our school, come meet folks, and so they will organize something very special to welcome those families in the spring.
Thank you all very much.
Don't you think Patty and Will did a good job this summer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Where are you going for vacation next summer?
I asked Will if he went to Alaska with Patty.
Thank you all very much.
You know, I just, I do want to just say to Will, in the last time, we used Versitron and really learned about a way to use these, the neighborhoods to find, and I think that's been a lesson now that you've been able to transfer on your own. So that was, yeah, a lesson well learned, so.
Thank you. We have no need for recess. We do have a closed session to return to after this meeting. So now may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.